Want to just say from the outset for the uninitiated because it's a bit of a slightly bit of a different system you have in Wilton Manners. There are three of you running for citywide city commission seats and two of you will get elected in November, right? The top two vote getters were...
Correct.
Yep. I've been around long enough that this is the system they used to have many years ago. This is the system Fort Lauderdale used to have for electing city commissioners and other communities as well. So, very well. Let's begin with you Commissioner Paul Rowley. I want to ask you a question that's come up on a couple of questionnaires. It's interesting. How far along, the smallest community by far in Broward, as everyone knows, is the little town of Lazy Lake? And is it seriously being considered that Wilton Manners would annex Lazy Lake? Is that a possibility?
I think it's a possibility provided Lazy Lake make a formal request for annexation. They made an informal request. They have a lot to do yet, but I think it's a possibility.
Don Darmenio, what do you think of that idea?
I would need to do the research on Lazy Lake. I think it's certainly a great way to grow the city and there are certainly positives. But my concern is I do not want our residents to have to absorb costs related to bringing their properties up to code and things like that. So I think we would have to do a thorough, you know, code enforcement would have to go in there and determine what is needed to make sure that those properties are really up to code, including the streets. It's just, I'm certainly open to it. I think it's a great idea. Again, I just want to make sure that it's not something that our residents have to absorb as far as costs.
I want to hear from Roy David Walker on this point as well, but just a second. And this is, you know, this is the sunsetal opinion section, so we engage in matters of opinion, you know? There seems to be no logical need to have a community with like whatever it is, 13 residents in it.
Correct.
It's a parody of Broward County, you know? I mean, we're of the opinion that there are too many cities. There are too many, the multiplicity of cities is an impediment to progress in Broward County. Having said that, Roy David Walker, what do you think about Wilton Manners annexing Lazy Lake?
Well, from my understanding, they approached the city and they made the request, Lazy Lake did. However, my biggest concern, which I wouldn't be opposed to embracing the community of Lazy Lake within the city of Wilton Manners, but my biggest concern is making sure that there's no debt being transferred over into the city of Wilton Manners.
Okay. Paul, let's go back to you, Paul, just for a second. Is that due diligence underway in Wilton Manners? Is somebody running the numbers or not?
Well, we've done a little bit of due diligence. We're waiting to hear from Lazy Lake. We have concerns that any polluter to take the city over doesn't cost the residents any money. There are environmental issues we have to look into. Some of the residents, I understand, are not hooked up to the sewer system. Some are still on septic systems. There's the issue of whether the lake is polluted, so we wouldn't want to take on that. We don't want to take on any of their legal liabilities. They had some issues with the state, so we want to make sure that they come across and they come across cleanly if there are issues that need to be addressed, that the residents of Lazy Lake get assessed for that, not Wilton Manners residents.
Okay. I'm going to, before I go further, Don Darmenio, Don, you're outside it looks like, which is fine. I feel like we're getting, I don't know if it's raining or what, when you activate your mic, we're getting a lot of background noise.
Oh, I can go inside, I'm sorry.
No, no, not at all. Just if you don't mind doing it, just mute your mic when someone else is talking.
Sure.
That will cure it perfectly. No, you look fine and you sound great, so.
Thank you.
But, you know, I want to switch to kind of a biographical mode here, just for a couple of minutes with all three of you. I'm going to ask you biographical questions. We're going to start with Roy David Walker. Roy, you worked for the State Department of Environmental Protection, didn't you, at one point? Or Fish and Game? Tell me where.
Yes, I did. I was employed with the State of Florida with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. I was a, my title was biological scientist, working out in STA, the Storm Water Treatment Area 34.
You work in Tallahassee?
No, I did not. It was in the STA. It was in Broward County, Palm Beach County, like on the borderline of the county line.
Okay. And what's the history, if there is any history? What's the history with you and former Governor Rick Scott and the words "climate change"?
That doesn't necessarily have to do with me, but through a nonprofit that I run, or a part of South Florida Autobahn. And at that time, supposedly when I was working with the state as well as volunteering with the EPA, which where you probably got the, I'm sorry, the Environmental Protection, and I was talking about the coral reef. I was traveling this South Florida region, talking about the coral reef, talking about the bleaching, and the governor did not want us to be talking about the words "climate change."
Okay, so, you know, this is ancient history perhaps, but climate change is a bigger deal now than it was a few years ago, obviously. But that's still an interesting story. You were at one point thinking of, or were briefly, you ran for Commissioner of Agriculture four years ago, right?
That is true.
What was that experience like?
It was a great opportunity to travel the state, to meet a lot of amazing people. It was quite the experience. The opportunity to educate a lot of people about this office, which is probably one of the biggest hardships at that time because the Department of Agriculture wasn't very well-known within the party.
Okay, yep. Don Darmenio, Don, you're a native of Hackensack, New Jersey. You went to Montclair. You went to Montclair State. You've lived in Wilton Manners for about 14 years, according to your questionnaire. And you've got significant, a lot of civic involvement on the planning and zoning board and other things. In terms of your personal life, your evolution as a person, as a businessperson, as a political activist, what do you want voters to know about you?
Well, you know, Wilton Manners is a city that I used to visit when I lived in New Jersey, and it's a city that I fell in love with. So I was a tourist, like many that come to Wilton Manners, and I bought a condo here so I had a place to go to. And it's a city that I ended up moving to and retiring to, and it happens to a lot of us. I'm actually a retired accountant. I've worked for more than 25 years, working in the private sector. When I retired from Scholastic, the book publisher, I was the director of their state and local tax department. So what I really find ironic is I've worked with state and local governments my entire This time I would be working with the government along with our residents and business partners. When I worked in the private sector, I was a business partner working with the governments. So I feel like I've come full circle. I've also spent six years on the city's planning and zoning board. I've held leadership positions. I was elected vice chair, board chair. And it's a really humbling experience to not only be appointed to the planning and zoning board for three consecutive two-year terms by our city commission, but then to have your colleagues on the board elect you as vice chair and then board chair. So that experience has really given me a full understanding of not only how our city operates, but our city code itself. And I'll leave it there.
Yeah, thank you very much. As a member of the planning and zoning board, you've got to vote on development proposals, you've got to vote on, you know, density issues, things like that. Do you have the capability to say no?
As a matter of fact, there are seven of us on the planning and zoning board, and I'm a person that believes I'll vote for what I stand for even if I stand alone. And as an example, there were votes that we made on the planning and zoning board where there were six yeses and I was the no vote. And I explained why my vote was a no. And that was a recommendation, and when it went to the city commission, they actually read the minutes and modified it accordingly. So I felt like my no vote was the right vote because it did make a difference, even though it wasn't part of the consensus.
Okay, thanks for that, appreciate it. And in the 14 years you've lived in Wilton Manners, tell us what the biggest single significant change, positive or negative, has been in the community?
Well, I think one of the biggest negative issues is that we have an affordable housing crisis here. Real estate prices, rent prices have skyrocketed. And I think a lot of people unfortunately are being, a lot of our residents are being forced out of our city. They can no longer afford to live here. I mean, I'm proud of the fact that while I sat on the city commission, I was part of the board that recommended approval of the 48 affordable housing units at the Pride Center, the residences of Equality Park. And I think that's an example of really the types of projects that we need to support for our city. But I think that's the biggest negative. The biggest positive is that our city has grown in a great way. I mean, we're a tourist destination. We have recent code changes that are allowing our city to grow, which are desperately needed. So I'm looking forward to being part of that change, to continue the work that I started on the planning and zoning board.
Okay, thanks very much, appreciate that. Paul Rowley, elected in 2018, reelected in 2020. I know, Paul, that you've been endorsed by the LGBTQ Victory Fund, which is a national organization that endorses candidates in a multitude of states. We've talked about the Lazy Lake issue, but tell us, again, your biography, your life story, what are the most important things voters should know about you?
First of all, I was elected in 2018. I wasn't reelected in 2020.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, so four-year position. In 2020, I became the vice mayor, but still essentially the commissioner. So I spent most of my career in the Internal Revenue Service, and I started out as an auditor, internal revenue agent. I have a background in finance and accounting, a BS in commerce. And I quickly rose through the ranks through management. And I worked in Washington DC for 30-some years in the IRS International Organization, where I managed a large organization. It was also, it was kind of a quasi-management technical position. I was, became the IRS expert in a very narrow area of international taxation. So I've traveled the world. We had offices around the world. I was in charge of all of those offices, as well as intergovernmental programs that we ran with other countries. Nevertheless, because of my background in the government, it was kind of easy for me to step into the Wilton Manners government because I understood how government operated. And I'm trying to bring some of my large organizational experience to Wilton Manners to help them grow, to help them make some of the changes that they need to make and those sorts of things. In addition, when I retired, I retired at 59, and when I retired, I got involved with the city. And I started doing volunteer work. I became president of the Neighborhood Association. I got on the Budget Advisory Committee, came in sort of as a dark horse and got voted number one votes to get in on the committee. And I worked on that committee probably for six or seven years. I was chairman of the committee for four years. And as a result of that, I had a lot of interaction with the city officials, so I had a good understanding of the city.
All right, very good. You, as a member of the current city commission, you were in the majority in voting for a pay raise for the mayor and city commissioners.
Correct.
And so I want to ask you, Mr. Walker, your opponent, or not your opponent, but well, one of your opponents, one of the other candidates, told us he thought that that issue should have gone to a vote of the people, a vote like a referendum on the ballot. What do you think of that idea?
I think that the city charter requires the commission to determine the salary. So it's not a referendum.
How popular do you think the pay raise is with the voters?
I think it's fairly popular. I've run across a lot of people who said, "Congratulations on the raise." I mean, it looks like a big jump, but, you know, the salary started out at basically $3,600 in 1998 and gradually rose to, in 2015, to $9,750. So it went from $9,750 to $25,000. The $25,000 is still less than the average of all the cities.
Don Darmenio, what is your opinion about the size of the raise and how the city handled it?
I think the size, it was too much, too fast. It was 150 or so percent raised. I believe the mayor went from, I think it was $11,500 to $30,000. You know, my concern is that our police force is among the lowest paid, and they're trying to negotiate their own raise. And I believe they asked for a 7% raise, and that hasn't been agreed on yet. So my concern is the safety of our residents, putting that first. I would certainly support an increase, but I would not have supported an increase of that magnitude all at once.
Okay. And Roy David Walker, I'll get back to your point. You felt that an issue like this should have gone to a vote. Mr. Rowley indicates that this is a, under the charter, this is a decision for the elected officials to make, but I would like your opinion about something. Had it gone to a vote by the voters, what would have happened in your opinion?
In my opinion, from what I gather, I think the residents of Wilton Manners are very much in favor of a pay increase. I believe it would have passed. I just wanted to be more transparent with the community and felt like the commission shouldn't have picked their own pay raise. I felt it should have came from the people.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, go ahead, Paul, yep.
Yeah, I just want to address a point about, first of all, there was some discussion about whether we should do the pay raise before the election or after the election, okay? And some internal discussion with the city manager and so forth. And as the mayor said, he said, "We're going to do it before the election to be transparent because after the election, we could do it and it wouldn't matter." So there were plenty of people at the opportunity and very few people spoke up, including my two opponents, about anything for or against the raise. In addition, we did do a wage and salary study for all of the employees, and we adjusted all the compensation based on the results of that study. We reopened the police contract earlier than necessary to renegotiate the salary article. There has not, we did negotiate. I think everyone is going to be happy with the outcome. I can't disclose the final outcome yet, but it's not that we left the police behind.
Yeah, briefly on that same point, I don't know how much you can tell us, but we, it's our understanding that the police have asked for, or the city's considering giving them a 7% pay increase, correct?
Well, I think the 7% came as a result of negotiation, but after the first round of negotiations, I think that's what the police requested. Their first request was much higher.
Okay. And when will that be resolved? When will that contract be signed?
Hopefully soon. It's going to be resolved soon.
What would be your best estimate, Paul, about how many, typically, how many hours a week do you put in as a city commissioner?
Me?
Yes.
I can tell you, I certainly put in at least 40, okay? I go to almost every single city meeting there is, whether it be planning and zoning or budget. I go to a lot of meetings. I go to, I'm a representative to the Broward League of Cities. I'm the alternate for Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm on the Solid Waste Disposal Committee. So those are all meetings during the day, some are during the evening. As a result of, I thoroughly researched most of the issues that are coming up before the city, and we don't have any aides like other cities do, so I have to do a lot of that research myself with the assistance of city staff, but I do a lot of analysis work. So it'd be easy for me to say I put in at least 40 hours.
Okay, very good. And having said that, you know, I think you, all three of you would agree, you know, you don't get into this for the money.
Right.
It doesn't work that way. I mean, if you want to get into politics for the money, you should be running for the Broward County Commission for starters, or some other office. I'm going to defer to my colleague Dan Sweeney. Go ahead, Dan.
Real quick, Roy and Don, since Paul just said he goes to all the planning and zoning meetings, and you guys have been on planning and zoning the last couple of years, is Paul there all the time? Is that accurate? Roy and Don?
I have to apologize, I did not hear the question.
Oh, that's okay. I said, Paul says he's at all the planning and zoning meetings. You guys are on planning and zoning or have in the last two years, you and Roy David Walker. Is Paul a regular presence there at the planning and zoning meetings?
Yes, he is. I will attest that Paul attends most, he's attended most of the planning and zoning meetings, and I go to like the Development Review Committee meetings. Typically, Paul is there. So I will attest that Paul does go to most of the city meetings, many of them.
I saw Roy nodding his head along there, so I'll take that as a confirmation as well. You, we mentioned salaries in the police department. I wanted to get your overall assessment of Wilton Manners Police Department, in that it's a fairly small city, but it has its own police department. A lot of cities your size in Broward County, that is not the case. There's a lot of contracting with DSO. So I wanted to get your assessment of the Wilton Manners Police Department as they negotiate a raise. How do you think the department's doing? What improvements could be made? Don, since you spoke up first about the last half-joke-y question, I'll start with you on the more serious one.
Okay, you're absolutely correct. We are a small city of 12,700 or so, and I believe out of the 31 cities in Broward County, half of them don't have their own police department. And I think that's critically important to us. And the police department is the biggest draw in our city's budget. And that's the reason that one of my platforms, as an accountant, I tend to look at the numbers. And having a sustainable city budget is critical to keep and maintain our police department. Anyone I speak to, they absolutely want to be sure that we retain our police department. I think we are one of the safest cities, and I think overall, they do a great job. Part of the police department is code enforcement. We've always had issues with our code enforcement. I think they've gotten better. In all fairness to them, they're not fully staffed at this time, but I do think that there's room for improvement in our code department.
Okay. Roy David Walker, what do you think? The Wilton Manners Police Department, particularly now as they're negotiating a pay raise, what improvements do you think could be made in the local police?
Well, first and foremost, having been a graduate of the Wilton Manners Police Citizen Academy, as well as the Broward County Citizen Police Academy, having taken both of these Citizen Academies and comparing the two, I would say that Wilton Manners is definitely very much a diverse community, and having its own police department really brings our community in the more safer areas. For example, knowing our police officers as they ride their bikes, as they walk down the streets, or drive down the drive, knowing a police officer gives a bit of security. So when it comes to the pay increase for the police department, I'm very much in for it. And I do, when it comes to safety measures, I'm a big believer of making sure that the police department have the necessary tools and equipment to do their jobs safely so that they can come home every night. I'm also a big opponent of making sure that our police officers have the camera, body cameras on them, and as well as ensuring the safety of our community. And I'm a big supporter of getting the license plate readers. Probably not so much for the entry of the island of Wilton Manners, but perhaps maybe something that's more affordable, on perhaps maybe getting the license plate reader on a vehicle, which is, the cost is a little bit less and it's more sustainable. So it's about making sure that the police department has the necessary measures to do the safety and making sure that the community is safe as well. So thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Rowley, same question, you know, as they're negotiating this pay increase, what improvements do you think could be made in the job that the police department's doing in Wilton Manners?
I think the police department does an excellent job, and I think that it is a large part of our budget, but we love the police, the residents love the police, we like having our own police, they're very responsive to the residents, we have a relatively safe community by comparison to all the cities around us. So that's not something that we're going to give up, and that's one of the reasons that we're looking at financial and fiscal sustainability in the long run, because if we had to give up something because we were not fiscally sustainable, it would be the police, because they're the largest part of the budget. So we don't want to go down that route. What I think can be improved in the police, I think that the entire operation could be reviewed. I actually think we have too many, too much administrative staff related to the police department, and I'd like to see that shrink a little bit and put more cops on the beat, whether they be uniformed officers, or whether they be police aides, or even code enforcement folks. I did recommend, and I finally got the commission to agree, that we needed to do operational reviews of all the city departments and by an outside organization, because I think that we're growing so quickly and we're still sort of in an old-fashioned little city mode, and we need to move further ahead, we need to have a better infrastructure, we need to deal with change, we need to deal with leadership, those kinds of things. Are we structured properly from an organizational standpoint to deliver the appropriate services that we need to deliver at the best cost? Now, we're going to do, we did one department already, we're going to do two departments now, and the next department that gets done is the police department. So I'm hoping something comes out of that study that will streamline it a little bit and look at some of their process and some of the delivery.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Dan. I've got a related question to you, Paul, about the police. I'm just curious about this because it comes up in a lot of places that have their own police departments. Are the Wilton Manners police officers allowed to take their patrol cars home?
Yes.
Even if they don't live in the city of Wilton Manners?
Yes.
So what's the value? Explain to, as a taxpayer in Wilton Manners, what's the fiscal sense of having a Wilton Manners patrol car in Tamarack?
Well, this came up several years ago. I'm not even sure I was on the commission when all of this was discussed, but I'm certainly on the budget committee, and that was one of the issues we raised and tried to reduce the budget. And we got into a long discussion about the cost versus the savings and the quality of services if they didn't take the cars home. And then there was an issue about if you have your own car, you, the officers take better care of their own cars than they would if they just had rotating cars. I think that's something we could revisit if we needed to in the future. It's, that's how the decision was made.
Okay, so it's, I mean, it's a small benefit to those officers.
It is a small benefit.
Go ahead, Dan.
In view of their salaries.
Just real quick, you mentioned that it's the, public safety is the largest percentage of the budget, which I think is true in any city, but could you tell me specifically, like what, around what percentage that is?
It's about 50% of the general fund budget.
Okay.
The entire budget, the general fund budget.
All right.
Paul, what happened, the fiscal year is about to start on October 1st. What happens, what's happening to the property tax, the millage rate in Wilton Manners? Is it going up?
Staying the same.
Okay. But you've got, it's staying the same, but you, with property values, and property values in your community have, I think, risen dramatically.
Right.
So you're, with the same millage rate, you're getting a lot more revenue, right? Are you?
Right. Well, the millage rate has remained consistent for the last 40 years. Prior to that, I reduced it on two occasions, but it's been, maybe it's the last three years. I did reduce it early on in the game because I thought it was too high and the property values were rising. If you look at the charts, it will show you that property values go up, and historically the millage rate has gone down, the total millage rate has gone down, that includes the debt millage rate as well. But the property rate has stayed the same. We looked at that, we discussed whether we should reduce it or not, but we felt that to have a sustainable budget, we're in a great period of change right now, we're trying to reorganize our priorities, so we didn't want to cut ourselves short in doing that. We have a strategic plan, and for the first time, I think, we have an honest strategic plan where we have only five major strategic initiatives. So we're not all over the board, and we focus on those initiatives when we do all that money, for really the first time, we match the budget with the strategic plan. So taking all that into consideration, I think we had to come up with that result.
Okay, and what is the millage rate? What's it going to be?
I think it's six in total. At the millage, it's 5.98 or 8.9 or something.
Okay. I'm going to change the topic dramatically to something that is a headache for every community in Florida for lots of reasons, and it's vacation rentals, party homes, people call them. My question is for Don Darmenio. Don, this came up in another interview with other city officials, that the city is considering or has, sorry if I don't have this exactly right, the city is considering going into a, beginning, an inspection program of inspecting vacation rental properties. What can you tell us? In tell- What can you tell us intelligently about how Wilton Manners is managing vacation rentals?
Okay, I think historically, they haven't done the best job of managing vacation rentals. It's certainly gotten better over the last couple of years. I guess one of the issues that I had, and I brought this up at planning and zoning during my six-year tenure, our city code for many years had really prohibited any hotel under 50 rooms from being built by Wright anywhere in the city, including Wilton Drive. And whether or not that was the intention, our city did a really good job of keeping a hotel out of our city all these years. And while you can support code that really doesn't encourage or support hotels, you can't prohibit vacation rentals. So rather than getting a hotel on Wilton Drive, instead, we have hundreds of vacation rentals throughout our single-family neighborhoods. And I do think our city overall, and this is over a number of years, could have done a better job of steering tourism to our arts and entertainment district by supporting and encouraging a hotel or a place for them to stay. So, and I think that the city commission is also looking to modify our vacation rental ordinance, which I support for the most part. But part of my concern is that the proposition will also, in my mind, steer vacation rentals out of our arts and entertainment district. So that's really a concern. And I think that there should be an exemption for the arts and entertainment district. That's where we want the vacation rentals, and that's where they should be, in my mind.
What is it the city, be as specific as you can. What's the city doing, what's the city considering doing with this ordinance that would steer vacation rentals out of the arts and entertainment district?
Well, the proposal is any building with more than four units really cannot be a vacation rental. And there are multifamilies and buildings within the arts and entertainment district. And full disclosure, I actually own one of them, but I don't have vacation rentals. My building is all year round tenants. I've had tenants there for four and five years. But my building is an example, is one that the city should support and encourage vacation rentals in because I am in the arts and entertainment district. And my position is, as a city, we should do all we can to steer tourism out of our single-family neighborhoods into our arts and entertainment district.
Okay. Mr. Walker? I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
Well, I mean, I understand, you know, we've had issues where developers are looking to buy buildings and convert them to vacation rentals, and they are in our single-family neighborhoods. And for the record, that's not something that I support. But I do believe that the arts and entertainment district, in my mind, should be exempt from that. Because if you have a building or, you know, multifamilies in arts and entertainment, we have to pick our poison and decide where we want them. And that, in my mind, is the best place in our city for tourism.
Tell the uninitiated who don't live in Wilton Manners who will be watching this video, describe the parameters roughly of the arts and entertainment district. What is it?
It's Wilton Drive. It's basically Wilton Drive and the entire city block that fronts Wilton Drive is considered arts and entertainment.
Okay. Mr. Walker, what is your overall assessment of how Wilton Manners governs, regulates vacation rentals, and what, if anything, would you do differently?
All right, very good. So, over the years, vacation rentals have been a large problem within our city. One of the things that's been proposed in our budget this year is having a program to actually dictate on who actually is doing the vacation rentals so that we can send our code enforcement officers there and to make sure that they're following the code and procedures that's currently in place. Making sure that they are registered within the city. I believe it was just the last meeting, or meeting before, the commission meeting, the changes to Chapter 10 of the code, which increased, from my understanding, took the, I think it's the first reading, took the first definition, the definitions from the state. So we're changing the definitions towards the state definitions because right now, they're not up to par. So by changing those definitions and increasing Article 10, will actually help solve a lot of these issues within our city, especially for the vacation rentals. What I'm hoping to prevent is having whole buildings, such as one in Wilton Manners, which is 16 units, all 16 units are vacation rental. And that is in a single-family area. I'm not a big opponent of having a whole building of a vacation rental as that large. Now, I do think that underneath the state statue, it's hard for us to dictate on where they can actually go in the city, underneath the current state statue. And that's something that is a little too late to change because it's already there in place. So what we need to do currently within the city is hold the vacation owners responsible. Making sure they're following the plans, making sure they are registered within the city. So with these changes to Article 10, which I think is the right step in the right direction, also, I would like to say that our code enforcement officers are now working Fridays and Saturdays up late into the evening. And if, say, if there is a party, residents within our city can text them, call them, and they can show up right away. So we are, the city is constantly making moves to holding the vacation rentals owners responsible. So I'm very much for smart vacation rentals.
All right, Mr. Walker, do you know how many full-time code enforcement officers work for the city of Wilton Manners?
I believe it's two, and then a few part-time.
Paul, is he correct?
I think it's three. We just added one. I think it's three full-time. And we have a code supervisor, and I think we have an open part-time position. All our code officers are new, with the exception of one.
Why are they new?
Some have left. We added a position, so that's a new person. And our supervisor left as well. And so we have a new supervisor who I think is doing an excellent job and being more proactive in dealing with all of code enforcement.
Is the turnover in that unit driven by salary, low salary issues?
Not necessarily. I just think there were some, one of them was, I guess, fired over some issue with, for cause, not for performance.
Does Wilton Manners have a, as a public record, does Wilton Manners have a registry of vacation rentals? Such and such an address is a vacation rental property?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is Mr. Walker right that it's possible for a 16-unit building to be entirely vacation rentals?
Yes, that's one of the, there was a quirk in the law. And that's one of the reasons, when that building became, they bought the building and turned into vacation rentals, was one of the reasons that we had to change the rules. When we changed the rules to the four-unit buildings, as Mr. Darmenio spoke of earlier, that should be more than four units. But the four units is state law. And had we had the four units in place at the time, they couldn't have done that with the building. We also changed our hotel motel rules to conform with state law because it's basically a de facto hotel in a residential area. And okay, it happened, and this is how laws get made, and laws get changed. And so we want to prevent anymore. I'm not aware that the building has caused any particular problem. The company that owns it does own high-end rentals, vacation rentals. In fact, they bought one on my street. And I probably live on one of the most expensive streets in the city. And so we have one now, and so far, it's not been a problem.
You lost me on something. I want to just clarify it, so I understand it correctly. Yeah, the state law is that more than four units, it can't be a vacation rental.
Correct.
But if a building has 16 units and it's a vacation rental unit, what, it was grandfathered in? What's the story?
Well, it...
Or it's illegal, one or the other.
No, it's not illegal because it had to be grandfathered in under prior law. There was nothing we could do about it.
This is, again, this is the editorial page of the Sun Sentinel. This is why, you know, this is, I may be preaching to the choir. This is why state preemption of local regulation is a bad idea, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, this is, Wilton Manners is a different place than Port St. Lucie, than Palacca, you know, whatever.
We're a friendly little community town, and we like it that way. And we can't regulate even where vacation rentals go. So we can't drive them all into Wilton Drive, even if we'd like to have them there, because we can't regulate under state law because of the preemption where they go. We've got a lot of, we probably have about 400 or more vacation rentals, we only know about half of them. So we're working on, with artificial intelligence systems and other things to identify. We've also tried to engage our residents to be the eyes and ears of code. Because if we don't know they exist, we don't know they exist, unless there's a problem.
Right, okay, the clock's starting to be a factor. And I had one more question I wanted to pose briefly to all three of you. And that is, you know, the story about the West Point cadets who had, you know, had a drug problem at a property. It may have been a vacation rental property, I don't know, it was in Wilton Manners.
Yes.
You know, in the media, in the media, stories get disproportionately large attention briefly. But that was a story that put Wilton Manners on the national map in an unflattering way. It could have happened in a lot of different places. But it made, it has made a few people ask, and I'm going to start with you, Don Darmenio. It brought up the question of whether Wilton Manners has a substance abuse problem that's greater than maybe a city of 12,000 people should have. So how would you address that question?
I don't think that's correct. I don't think Wilton Manners has a great substance abuse problem. I think these are young party kids, and they found a party house that they can, you know, that they can vacation in. It's really the reason why I've always supported really allowing and encouraging hotel, a hotel on Wilton Drive, so that you don't have these large party rentals. You normally have a room with one or two people in them. I think anytime you have large group rentals, it becomes a problem, in our city or any city. You know, we talked about the state preemption for vacation rentals, and it is a problem. And this is the result of it. I would like to tap off something Vice Mayor Rowley said, that we can't regulate vacation rentals. And my understanding through our attorney is that while I support not more than four, if a building has more than four apartments in it, we would not allow vacation rentals, especially because there's so many in our single-family neighborhoods. But my understanding through our attorney is that we could have put an exemption in for our arts and entertainment district. I believe that you can exempt an entire district. And that, again, is something that I do support. Because, once again, we have hundreds of vacation rentals in our single-family neighborhoods. And I believe as a city, we should do whatever we legally can to steer them out of our single-family neighborhoods. And creating that exemption for our arts and entertainment district is one way of doing it.
All right, okay, I hear you on that loud and clear. Thank you so much. I'm going to go next to Roy David Walker. Same question for you, Roy, and that is, recalling the West Point situation only because it was so magnified and got a lot of attention. Does Wilton Manners have a substance abuse problem greater than a city its size should have, in your opinion?
Absolutely not. That whole thing was just a very unfortunate incident to happen. But I do not believe that Wilton Manners has any issue with this.
Okay, Paul Rowley?
I'm not aware that we have a problem of any greater than in the other city. I think the West Point situation was the fact that it was a party rental. It was an unregistered rental or an expired license. And it's an unfortunate situation. But these were young guys, and I believe they found a drug dealer who was in Fort Lauderdale where they bought their drugs. So really, it just happened to be in Wilton Manners, it could have been anywhere. Maybe they got a good rate on the rental. Because of that incident, as well as some of the other issues, we're trying to close in some of the loopholes from an enforcement standpoint. And under the new Article 10, or the revision to Article 10, there is a proposal to ensure that we have ages of renters on the lease. And my understanding is, at least who signs the lease has to be 25 years old. And a lot of those individuals are under 25. So whether that has any bearing on it or not, it might be better.
Okay, with the clock being a factor, I'm going to do this. I'm going to let each of you make a very brief opening statement of about, a closing statement, rather, of about one minute. First of all, I want to say that the three of you all came here well-prepared today, and we really appreciate that. This is a serious responsibility. And so, and you're all three obviously taking it very seriously, and that's a good thing to see in local government. And let's do this in alphabetical order, just to be ecumenical about it. So one minute, keep as close to a minute as you can, make your best case for why the voters should elect you on November 8. And Don Darmenio, you have the floor.
Great, thank you so much. Don Darmenio, I'm a 14-year resident. I'm a retired accountant with more than 25 years of experience working in the private sector. I spent my entire career working with state and local governments, primarily in taxation, audits, tax planning. When I retired from Scholastic, the book publisher, I was the director of their state and local tax department. I've spent the last six years volunteering on the city's planning and zoning board. I've held leadership positions, vice chair, board chair. And that's given me a thorough understanding of not only how our city works, but the city code itself. And there are some city codes that need changing, changes to better support our residents and our business partners. And I look forward to championing some of those to make our city even better than it is today. So I hope I can count on your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Rowley?
Thank you. I'm the right choice for Wilton Manners because of my professional and personal background, my experience, my education, and proven leadership, both in my professional career and in the city. As an incumbent, my leadership is demonstrated through the results. I've established good working relationship with city staff, with other officials in accounting in other cities, and that's very important. As a small city, we can't do everything by ourselves. We need assistance from others. Apologize for the noise, having work done in my house, and I can't help that. I'm well-known and respected within the community with a demonstrated ability to get things done. And as I said, I have good working relationships. I've been involved in the city on a regular basis for almost the entire time I've lived here. And I've worked with a lot of local nonprofits, I'm on boards, and I have a good understanding of what cities, what the residents need and want. And I ask you all to vote for me. Vote Paul this fall. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Roy David Walker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity to be here today, so thank you so much. So I'm Roy David Walker. Having been a 12-year resident of the city of Wilton Manners, I have the opportunity to give back to, to serve our community on a variety of different roles. From the Broward County Water Technical Advisory Board, from the Wilton Manners Planning and Zoning Board, the Urban Wilderness Advisory Board through Broward County, as well as the Park, Wilton Manners Park Advisory Board, the Wilton Manners Environment and Sustainable Board, and lastly, Chair, Vice Chair of the Wilton Manners Community Affairs Advisory Board. So when it comes to giving back to my community, I'm always there giving back. I decided to run for commission because I'm the one that has the qualifications to bring our urban area within a more sustainable approach. I'm running because I believe in sustainability. Whether it's a vote for where our money goes, or about a vote on land use or economic development, no matter where my vote would go, is always be pro-smart and sustainable growth. And that's why I'm running to be the next commissioner of Wilton Manners. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today.
All right, thank you. Don, Paul, Roy, we really appreciate your participation here today. Thank you very much. Best of luck to all three of you. Thanks.